I mean, they sell fireworks out there, okay? And but that, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I'll call Bob Seldar and go like, okay? They do though. So Donna's gonna call Bob Seldar. Um, I presume that Sturges was one that does nothing? Like, do you?
I don't know that I heard that come down.
Okay.
No.
It must have been either Mead County or Tullamiamba that have fireworks right on the interstate.
Yeah, yeah. That is Mead County there. So whether it would be Somerset or, but those Somerset should be called. And, um, Sturges.
Rapid Valley, you can get by Rapid Valley, but not Rapid City.
Right. And Rapid Valley has zero, um.
Zero or ordinance.
Zero or ordinance is as far as I know. Mm-hmm.
And this is really still just like price, what we're charging is what we're concerned.
Yeah, what we're concerned with, yeah.
Now, where did we leave them with as to whether, did we leave them with, we're not gonna charge them anything for anything fireworks included? Or did we leave them with, all right, other vendors are no charge, but we're still talking fireworks? Like, these are the only ones really of any concern, the community center.
Well, except for that, yes, it is the community center. I think we kinda had them thinking there would be nothing, no charge. Uh, I don't know, I'd have to go back through the paperwork to find out if, you know, if we actually voted on that. Does anybody remember? Um, however, there goes the possibility that there'll be another one up the truck stop.
Right.
And.
That's in the city limits.
Yeah, and that is in the city limits, so we just really need to make a decision and, um.
I haven't heard back from Hot Springs.
Hot Springs.
Um, I also haven't heard back Kadoka and all, but it's not.
Just.
Sturges has fear fish, I think. Fear fish, then no, they're not gonna get fire something coming down there.
Kadoka, you haven't heard from?
Mm-hmm.
And when you contact them, you contact them via email?
I did.
You did? And they, so, so maybe a personal phone call, just a quick.
Do they still have the F on the chat room?
No, they changed all that, it's all on the municipal day board website now. So they don't have the group email anymore. Let's do that, that was Mandy.
Yeah.
Wonder why they clicked that?
No, maybe we should cut off this word or.
Well, they have something like it on.
Well, you can recommend it.
Well, it has something, it has kind of the same thing on the SCML website, but I'm not set up in like a Sophie and I just haven't had time to figure out what I need to do with that. But, cause they have to be added to the group and they, well, that doesn't work anymore, you gotta do this.
Okay.
So I usually just email the ones that I know, if I have their email address, email fear fish.
We have to copy somewhere what we used to charge, what we charge.
I, I couldn't find an old one. Where do you charge on that street?
Well, find the liability insurance and, I mean, we used to have a legal company.
I mean, that is one thing we really should, in, in the few schedule part of it. That we at least have to have proof of insurances all the way around when it comes to fireworks and explosives.
Yeah.
Um.
There's the, they need at least two licenses from the state.
Yeah, they did talk to, um, um, Lane yesterday, Fringel. And he said there are some permits that they have to do through the state. And he's gonna share those with me, Lane, I never got him, I thought he didn't see the data.
Haven't gotten it.
Haven't gotten him yet, so he was gonna have Nick maybe, cause he'd been nicked in last year. So that would hold up.
Probably get a pretty good bro, I'm not ashamed. Sales tax revenue, yeah, right. There, there's always that, but it's, uh.
It was fire danger.
Yeah, it's fire danger and, and it's, we're here on the roads and, I mean, there's a little bit of everything, you know, when you have that big of a, uh, sales, so. Okay, so we need to find out more information about that. So that brings me to, um, right now, we're at twenty-second today. Next week, instead of a work session, we're having the, um, community session about the comprehensive plan. And that is at what time?
Six o'clock now.
That is at six o'clock.
A hearing evening?
What?
Like a public hearing?
Public, yeah, mm-hmm.
Not a hearing.
Not a hearing. It's not a hearing, it's just a public meeting. It'll be at the, um, upstairs of the community center.
Oh.
It's, it's more mostly like meet and greet that Neil wants to put together.
Yeah, yeah. It's Neil and it's about the comprehensive plan. He sent out, um, or we sent out, he wrote it, we sent out a survey. And people are bringing them back, is that not too much?
I have forgotten.
Um, but he wanted to see if people would show up and, and ask questions, and so we're gonna do that. Now, my question is wanting to know if you all wanna have a, start out with a work session at five? Five to five forty-five and then go on down there? You don't wanna? I got one definitely negative here. You know as well?
Well, there should be a few of us down there.
We were already at four meetings this month, we're already at four meetings this month.
Oh, that's on the twenty-ninth, that is on the twenty-ninth. What would I miss? We had one, one, we needed to have an extra.
We wanted to be, yeah, the fourth, how about the Lagoon something one? That would be.
I didn't.
I'm not even sure what else we're looking at work session, like we got the fireworks scene right now, I can't think of anything else right now that's pressing.
Well, the prep, we, we need to start working on the, um, complaints and violations because we're getting into that time of year. And that is why I thought that, um, we could maybe meet and do a little bit. Or we could meet afterwards and do a little bit, but if nobody else.
I don't wanna meet afterwards, I assume before, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it.
Okay, so let's talk about, we're already dang close to May. Let's go ahead and talk about work sessions in May. So our regular board meeting is on the sixth. So it will be the thirteenth, regular board meeting on the twentieth. And then the twenty-seventh, which would be the day after Memorial Day. Like, that's a no? Did I hear you say?
Well, I.
I wonder, I should be. How does everybody else feel? Please tell me how, what you're thinking here. And girls, don't be. Y'all, y'all, y'all. I will be gone, okay? I, I will be leaving. So Cal will be running the meeting on, um, if we have one on the thirteenth, he'll be running that one, which would be a work session. Also on the twentieth, which is a board meeting. I will be home for the twenty-seventh.
We better put her back to work.
Going fishing, going fishing for ten days, so.
We're going. Why are you gonna go here?
Oh, where was that?
That thing you want.
That's a custom. Oh, that's Custom State Park, well, that's any state park, which we are going to a state park, so we can use a decree, yeah, yeah. So, um. Everybody's very quiet and how come I'm the only one with a voice today? So what do you think about the twenty-seventh, are you a day off Memorial Day?
I mean, I'm, I'm fine, whatever.
Nobody has any big vacations or anything really planned, Cal? How are you?
What?
For time on the twenty-seventh, you wanna have a work session?
I guess.
And on the thirteenth, well, you guys have a better time, please?
I did.
Yeah, I, I mean, we just need to get through this stuff. All right, let's do a work session on the twenty-seventh, I'll go. And the thirteenth, both at five o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And regular board meetings on the sixth and the twentieth, okay? All right? Um, what else did we have on the work session list that we were kind of halfway, halfway into the memory?
So we still got the water ordinance we're poking at.
Right.
Um, I'm letting that go after the first week and then, so.
You'll be done, huh?
I'll be slamming and jamming and doing all sorts of whatever I can do. So I got mine, I got mine, seemed like I got my info situation sorted out, just kind of getting it out. But, yeah, it's all cool, the coast, the blocks are free, Tom.
Okay.
So I'm gonna be jamming. Um, we'll get into it later, uh, during the meeting about the, uh, streets, uh, our research from like BPM stuff. Dan told me about, I looked into it and it's, all municipalities rate about it as like the best possible option for patching, cold patching. Like the top tier material, it's more pricey, but, but, uh.
Well, we talked about red, say P and V. Well, how does anybody feel about that?
And then, we don't have a whole.
There are a lot of things you want to. Meeting all the time. Well, they don't have to, they wouldn't have to have a meeting, only if needed. And they could be working, hang on just a minute, Shannon, they could be working on some of these ordinance things. And we could show up, you know, all, and do it all together, and it would be helpful. And, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking that when, when we get to the point of, uh, where these subdivisions or whatever are gonna start going, we're gonna be jamming these ways then until, there's no sense of initiating something and then. Because, um, Lindsay, she, she knows, she's, she's new, yeah, but she knows, you know.
Yes, and stuff.
Yes, she, she is, yep. So, you know, I would say. Wait till they are really actually doing construction, okay? Wait till it starts, you feel the same way?
Same way, yeah, and let it build a little bit of momentum.
Okay, Cal, how do you feel about that?
Um, I don't know, I don't, I don't mind having Benish do that stuff, but.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Oh, that's, that's a good point, right? I mean, what would be do, be doing with the P and Z board that finish?
Yeah, right, that's true.
I was talking to Anthony about it, he claimed that it would be equally cost effective to have them do it as to have P and Z do it. As far as what it would cost the town.
Yeah.
The extra cost for P and Z, uh, that the town would have paid for basically because, uh, permit fees and things like that would pay for their side of things.
Okay. Which is true, I, I.
The number of hours that, that P and Z would be working versus the number of hours that they would be working, uh, that's what he claimed, but.
Well, we'll have to go out and wait and see on that. Um, I, I'm okay with them doing it also if they can do it at the same price and if they have the time to do it. Right now, they seem like they're so dang busy, but then I know that they're planning on hiring more people too to handle these things, so, um. So we can, Shannon?
I mean.
Yeah, opinion?
Not really.
Okay.
I don't think they're gonna have Benish on it.
I mean. There's stuff that we need to get down before summer time, I mean, down with some ordinance, some fire ordinance, some water ordinance would be helpful, they need to be done, so. You know, we need to, we have to. I agree the way.
Okay. All right.
I mean, maybe we don't wanna wait until the meeting's on or. We go to the specialist and decide on meeting before, week before, you know, everyone's feeling there then. And we go on the twentieth.
Our next meeting is on the twentieth?
Yeah.
No. Time on the, on the sixth.
Memorial Day, after Memorial Day.
After Memorial Day, oh, that's the one you're talking about, discussing it more?
That's the one you were talking about.
Yeah, okay.
Next meeting, Donna's fixing.
Well.
We do something.
Well, the twenty-ninth, yeah, we have that. The, the twenty, okay? All right, so we'll.
When is Frank's date up?
Uh, next, this, this Saturday.
Let's be when you.
And so that brings me to, that's a good question too, thank you for bringing that up, Shannon. Um, Dan, you are still gonna be there with your loader? For cleanup?
Yeah.
Okay, and are you gonna be the ones talking to the garbage company? You've always done it before, having them, what time they're coming, what time they're picking up and all that?
I'm sure they'll call Terry and, if she wants to direct them to me, cause we normally figure at seven o'clock in the morning. We don't want them dropped up any sooner.
Right.
I'm prepared about that at three, three thirty.
Two large containers, or?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
If they've done enough, okay, I'll, I'll give them a call tomorrow.
Yeah.
Just verify that they're gonna do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, um, but normally we have, in the past, we have had other board members sitting, being there, helping, um, to make sure that people, the right people, you know, that there's no out of city people dumping.
We're a good one without, we don't know anybody.
I know. Don't know anybody anymore, it's crazy, um.
If they have time.
If you have time, if anybody would be available, it happens right next to the post office, um. Got time? Got time, you guys, either of you guys?
I'm gonna stop being the question, do things.
This Saturday.
Anytime.
Um, this Saturday, this Saturday I'm working. All right, Ma is planning on being there, I will not be able, I have to go spearfish and paint, so. My daughter's in the house, but Ma's planning on being there, so. If you guys decide you have an hour or a half hour and wanna come up and join, that would be nice. Okay, um, what else do we got?
That's a complaint going in. New door locks, we just kind of, I would have done that.
We need to do the.
New door locks, yes. And then surplus, long, probably a couple, second one, we talked about.
How does everybody feel about that?
What about?
Surplusing the, the older.
Yes, we were talking about.
Yeah, I know.
I would, I would hold off on it unless it's, if it's particularly inconvenient spot or stepping over, turning over, we need it gone.
What is your reasoning for wanting to wait?
Backup, in case.
Just in case?
Just in case our, um, Marshall's main vehicle starts getting weird and ends up needing a backup. Um, if it's not, if it's not possible, anything and we're not, you know, if it's not something that needs to go.
No value either.
Well, that's the thing, there's no value to it. Yeah, we probably have to put tires on it and everything, get put it back up, we also.
Just a bummer they put all the, all the lights and stuff on, but we did not want, well.
Yeah.
So I did talk to our candidate today.
Oh.
He calls quite regularly, just checking on. He said, please don't give up on him, I said, this is just a full process, and he's like, oh, no, because their family's really excited, but. So I had talked to the guy from that runs the training center in fear, he called me when he found out we were, I had sent the, um, fingerprinted in, did background check and all that, and he just. And he had sent me a list of other things that we need to do, so I sent it to Donna and here and some throw in the law enforcement. And I think it's just like, um, getting a driver's license, rec, record, um, the driving record, checking on their, um, former employees. So, um, he said he would help us out, like if we need information, he could give us. That's pretty standard, yeah, so I said, he copied today and I said, well, this is what we got, maybe you've seen it before. And he said, oh, yeah, that's pretty standard, so, so he's been looping whatever we need him to do, he'll, he'll, but.
Okay.
He's still very interested there and his family's very excited about, so.
Well, good, did we come out? And what day does the school start?
Um, August, like the fourteenth.
That early? Oh, oh, his school.
His school, yeah. Your school, no, not, not.
Our school.
August eighteenth.
August eighteenth?
Yeah, maybe so. Yeah, I'm gonna go, so, is it, is it November fourteenth?
Put their little one in the cupboard, he just wants it, I imagine.
Totally know where they were.
November.
November?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that it was November, fourteenth is a Friday.
Yeah, so then, August eighteenth to November fourteenth, so thirteen weeks, so. And I can't really do have a spot reserved for him, but that's all contingent upon us getting him hired and. Because it's not a real team. Cause we generally can't put his name on there, so we have to hire him, so.
So he has to finish, the work of has to be done.
Well, we're, you know, we're, we're basically waiting on the background check and then plus the other little items, so kind of.
Is the school on Monday?
Do you? This coming Monday?
Yeah.
Three weeks, well, I just thought it could mean, it could mean.
I don't get it, I don't get it at all.
Global makers.
Can't be serious, yeah.
Okay.
That's right, we need to have some fun, smile a little. So, um, we need, of course, to get that done as soon as possible so that hopefully we can guarantee a spot that he's in there because that would really be a bummer if he's not.
Yeah.
So.
Everything on that checklist, look, I haven't seen anything in there that could possibly be an obstacle.
Like you said, but all that, that standard he's letting you go, he was not surprised at all.
Okay.
But, well, often, you know, if you wanna look at it, absolutely, he says he could give you names for people to call for.
That's what I was thinking.
And I know the driver, to get the driver's record is free, we have to do that as well.
Today's Tuesday, the twenty-second, I'm trying to remember when it.
We're all being correct. John, oh, I have to be there a lot and get out, too. So I got the morning and afternoon.
I think we're gonna need up there in the morning, afternoon.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm glad you got me. And he said you can call him anytime, and he's pretty much.
Well, we wanna get him hired as soon as we get that, and.
We don't give up on him.
And.
I've got some information. Yeah, and I, and I said, you know, you gotta be like, if we didn't, we haven't hired him, really, it's Tom Marshall and a lot, a lot of years, and, and things have changed now. And so we're, we're learning too, so, so he was very okay, like, he called about what we.
That's, that's nice, that's nice to hear, okay, good. Okay, so what else was there then?
Um, the new door locks.
So the new, new door locks, um.
We did get in for the evidence terms out there, we have three keys.
Okay.
And, you guys probably need to pick inventory with down there, I mean, I don't get there, but I, you know. There's crying.
Not a lot in there.
No, I was gonna say, because when I went down there that time, there was, we need nothing in.
Yeah.
File list, the list I had. Stuff like that, wasn't good. But, but maybe you guys could do that.
Okay. Um, locks. So we need a new lock on this door up here. And both doors downstairs, they were separate locks than what this one was, and they shouldn't be. But we probably need to re-lock those too, so. We got three.
And the code on it.
And the code.
The code. Of your lock.
Is there a, a, what, Shannon?
I, but we have a need that we talked about before. That hasn't been used.
Uh, you know?
We got a lot of keys and all that, when we did run the lock car, we got a ton of that for keys.
Okay, so they locked.
Right.
So it, you've been through both those closets and they're not in there?
No, I haven't been through that closet. This one, this is, this is a key, I was, I was.
Okay, so we need both the closets and all the covers to be gone through.
Actually, the covers, there's nothing, there's nothing in there, there's some new ones in a drawer, I think, but, no, there's no, no, there's no.
New locks?
There may have something in there.
New keys or new locks?
I think there's.
Yeah.
Spent a while, spent like, spent in this one drawer.
At one time you're, and, so you must be remembering this too, Shannon, when we change locks, we save all the locks so that we could change them back. Or move them around or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. Right.
Yeah, waited.
Is it open again?
No, it didn't start, it was six.
No, I didn't gather time or something. It's not, there's nothing you can do, but, just learning, right? You can adjust your schedule some.
It's not beautiful, I don't know.
Talking about things now, talking about where they are.
I don't like this shirt. Well, okay. So Shannon, we were right, there's only a couple of door locks, several padlocks, a couple of door locks in there. But they don't have the keys, but they're right in the lockbox, so she'll have to check on that and see if they, any of the keys, cause she's got, I mean, a bucket full of keys, I swear. And we'll check into that. Yeah, for the two bottom ones, anyway, you know. So, we'll have you check, you and Lindsay to check on keys for that. And then we'll decide if, I would think that if we have keys for those two, we could put them both downstairs. And that we get a new one for up here. And, um, we will need a new one up for the law enforcement door. Um. For sure.
Need the interior law enforcement door.
Interior. Law enforcement door, yes. Okay. Um. Well, that's the license, sorry for that. Okay? Okay? Um. So we need to divide the, well, we have the violations and the complaints, so they'll be different, each of them. And, but we need to get working on this. So, I don't know, how long is anybody thinking about working tonight? How long is this meeting should last? Could be more than an hour, should last. Should last. We want to. Say that again, Shannon, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Anyone's up for a debate by meeting if you want several hours today?
Mm-hmm.
Want to buy or something? Before you want a burger dinner and bedtime and.
Right. Well. You, you and I can meet and anybody else who wants to, but, you know, Cal works during the day. Um, so he's mostly unavailable. Um, Donna works during the days, most days. Three days, three days. What about, does anybody have any time on Friday? Day.
What?
This Friday.
No, no.
In the afternoon, you what?
Day.
Oh, that's your doctor appointment day? Okay. No, yeah, no, can't miss it, yeah. Okay. Maybe. Maybe next week, we can come up with something during the days.
Hi, Anthony.
Okay, um. Well, I guess we'll call that good for our session, it's ten o'clock. We've got some plans anyway, we didn't get very much discussed, but, you know, any changes, but we even have some more plans, so. We'll work on that and.
Yeah, he's been sitting all day. Oh, yeah.
Right. Right. Yeah, fine. Okay.
I looked, I didn't find one on the town.
Okay, well. Okay.
Yeah, I hope this, I can. I can check the town computer, I had CD, I don't know if I went back far enough.
All right, well. Yeah, right. Mm-hmm. Yeah, right.
Spring's fine here.
But, uh, spring's fine. I don't know. Thursday sounded like another downfall. They say forty-four for a high.
Well, Jerry, well. Good, Anthony, thanks for calling us. All right.
On that roller coaster.
Yeah.
Like we live with. I've seen it snow on me.
I've seen it snow in June.
Well, yeah, I've been higher elevations.
Well, even that year? One time this is one, that one year on May fourth, I remember that. Last, uh, snow on his birthday, May eleventh, many times. So.
Yep.
Never see those days again.
You give a foul?
May, May snow?
No, only, you, you will see it sometimes, but you won't see it foul, no. Is this banana bread?
It gives.
Is there cinnamon?
No.
Oh, good. Thank you.
You said that.
I'm gonna make something that is like, oh yeah, I can't do that, I can't put cinnamon in.
I mean, you don't have to.
I never put cinnamon or cinnamon.
You don't have to.
No, I know, so many times, but. That's my, I'm a sour cream.
So this thing is loaded, huh?
Yeah, I had to go delete some off there, because we saved mine, like, if you, I forgot to, it was full of them, now it's.
Oh, it'll be, it will be ready for the record?
It'll be ready for the record.
I only missed like the first ten minutes.
Want me to lift you one too? But why?
This all seems like a lot of great information, so.
Yeah, there was one thing we needed to do, the other two came up and we just started throwing in and getting it down.
Yeah, well, yeah. That's one last thing to do next time. For information, it's information.
That's three, oh, it's in, it's tall. Right, this is his team, three hundred provisions.
Yeah.
Was that what he said?
Yeah.
Is he company? So he ever that, he isn't married to that woman? No, they're married.
Yeah, her last name.
She grabbed it, she.
It's been a busy. A lot of years. For Shannon to take her over quite fast.
Look at the light out there in the corner.
Five, five acres of.
Okay, I don't lay up.
Yeah. But they get the light down, is that?
I did, actually, I didn't pay attention. Where it is?
Yeah.
So we, um. Believe that our light is tried, that lights up our flag.
Oh.
And so we've got to get new lights to light up the flag, so. I don't know what's on your schedule this week. I mean, you know, but what else can you put on your schedule this week? No, what I'm trying to say is that if you need to go to town to take bank class then, just plan on going to Menards, buying new locks and buying new locks for the flag. Agree?
Yep.
Have a question, do they close the, the property, the federal property?
Yes, they closed that.
Have they?
Yep. 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 And they don't do a very good job of shipping it either, from what I've been told. I think so. I think it's still the same website as it was before, isn't it?
What time, Mom?
Federal third one.
I was really wrong.
These have on box, with the box elders?
Yeah.
Now, is it all in here or?
It's all in here, yeah.
Anything on lockers, cars, vehicles?
Cars.
The spare, you know, you know what else you could do? You could look for a metal one while you're at, to cover that.
Metal.
A metal plate to cover it rather than plastic.
Linda, is it Aaron or anybody else going into that?
Oh, I don't know. What's that?
Pick this stuff up like one time. Well, then you just pay for it.
Order it on the market and I'll do a pickup.
Yeah.
As long as it's not bigger than a pal.
Yeah, that.
We bought some totes one day, we got the mustang. And I put my top down, so it's, I was right with the top down, I had to put it down though so I can get the totes.
I put it down, it's trying to pour a ladder.
What was that?
Oh, that's a boy, I know, that's something for that.
Okay. Okay.
This is the subdivision that we just did for the name, that it's not much in the building.
Yes.
And that we have decided to let the car, the rest of it. Be swinging in and shut them and it's under checking the building, what the building's doing.
I don't, I don't recall it being like that, no.
I know, you were asking for a, thanks reduction.
Well, that was on the, that was on floodplain, yeah, which we did. The building's come from Custer County, we don't, it's, it's in, outside the city limits, both in the ex-territorial, and so the.
Right, so did not, just have a reduced drop in yields at all?
No, we gave them a reduced rate on the, on the, was that the floodplain, floodplain, I don't. This is not his son, so, he sold lot board. Did you say?
There's no utilities on this lot.
There's no, there's not gonna be any utilities on this lot.
Is all this being recorded right now? Good last hour.
Wow.
Yeah, we got you on tape talking about the bread too.
With the strip thing or the cinnamon, cinnamon free.
Cinnamon free, yes.
About the bear's.
So I, I agree with you, Shannon, that there will be discussion on annexation at the time, when, at some point in time. But, but Mr. Herbert bought this lot. And from him because he did not want any building done behind him. So he bought the lot. And it, and it sounds like he will not be wanting any water or sewer on that lot. That he just wants to put that carport there. And because it's not, um, in the city. It's. You know, he, the, Custer County, what?
Right, the border's, the border's the town.
It will border the town, yes.
Right, church to that, to all our organs, right?
Well, the organs that I was concerned about was the, um.
We should start the meeting.
Yes. Right. Right. We need to start the meeting, huh, hang on a second.
Just listen now, not when we're in.
Okay, as it is six oh two, um, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, we will bring this Hermosa Town Board Special Meeting to order. Roll call, Kramer's here, Ferguson here, Coons.
Here.
Harris. Eric. Service.
Here.
So all board members are here, and we have a few attendees also in the audience. Would everybody please stand and join me to pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And just so everybody's all here, I'm here. Don't know. I'll be saying that for a long time, so. Call for changes, uh, review of the current agenda and a motion to accept it as presented or amended. Donna makes a motion that we accept the agenda as it is, does it, do I have a second to that? Cal, thank you, Cal. Discussion, does anybody have anything else that they think needs to be added or changed? Quickly, no? All those in favor? Hi, motion period, Shannon? Oh, I didn't hear you, thank you. It's all right? Please declare if you have a con, conflict of interest at the time that the subjects come up, thank you. Items of business. Um. A, approve the letter to shore per resolution for outstanding items. So the letters that we have in our packet are the ones written by them. And did we find the paperwork that we had, all the prices?
No, I went through. Agenda, package. Yeah, I didn't have time to record it, but, so the original letter was presented as of July eighth, twenty twenty-one, fourteen. And then June fourth, the twenty twenty-four, we had, the bid process is being compiled for that gravel on the power roads. And then the letter was provided again on August sixth, which means, I couldn't find any motion or anything that's through. Yeah, like, yeah, I don't know. I guess there's ten minutes, but.
So Dan, we have no record of the pricing that, and the letter that you gave to the town or the.
For.
For doing the work of the shores.
I have one in my office, I'll email it.
Because I think you brought it to a meeting, it was never in the packet, and now for some reason I can't find.
See, they kept copies of it here, Dale did.
Can't find anything.
But I have another copy in my office that I can fire.
Um, I, no, I wasn't there either. Um, Dan's got a copy of it, so.
Yes, Dan?
Then, did you find everything else about the agreements in the packet with the Northwater Sewer Line then, that we had agreed to all of this?
I, like I say, I wasn't sure, I looked from like twenty-one to twenty-four and there just wasn't a lot. Not even, and there was no, like when you look at the minutes, there was never any motion for aid in this.
See, and it should have been an approval of all the Northwater Sewer Line stuff, it was all filed and a motion on, and with Linda, I.
Northwater Sewer Line.
Fifty.
And maybe I wasn't looking for the right name, then, we'll.
But, uh, that was when Ace's put it all together.
Okay.
So Ace's engineering were to have. The proposal and the agreement. the proposal and the agreement and what we did for the.
It would be with ACE's work.
Before we could even move forward with the Northwater Sewer project, we had to agree.
Um, I'm gonna make a new file with all this stuff and it's all in my place for having
Right. Okay, got that on me. Yep, got that on the list. Okay, Aaron?
What Anthony was kind of looking for from us and what they were looking for really is a letter telling them where we are doing this. Can we get something out to them like we're in research and this is what we are regarding?
Yeah, is it absolute?
Anthony's really evolved, since he's already kind of, as a loophole on this, has anybody, he could send a letter on the beach path, right?
I think we should just do it from the town.
Just do it.
Yeah, and state in there that Anthony is working on it also. And so, um.
Maybe he can write it to Perry's company.
Yeah, yeah. So Terry, would you put that on your to-do list ASAP? Yeah, sorry. Dan?
Now, Anthony, I don't mention about trying to get the guys from Southern Black Hills Water out here, seeding guy, to see if he would seed over that line again for us. And I don't know if Anthony ever followed up. I see they seeded the one lower section.
Yes, they have done.
And they haven't started on the long run.
Right.
But now it would be the prime time that they're gonna do it, if we're gonna get any moisture. Otherwise, we go beyond, the next two weeks, we're gonna miss the window again.
Yep, yep.
So he can get a number from them to seed it. I don't know, excuse me, but if Shorps wouldn't even be interested, you know, Bill or Wade, Larry, and putting a number together to seed it too, if Anthony wanted to call them or ask Wade, you know, would either one of his brothers be interested in it? Maybe we, probably a good thing to ask Wade first.
Great. Thank you, Dan. So make sure that's Dan's be above it.
Who was that, Black Hills?
Well, Southern Black Hills Water. Seeding it, he was trying to make a contact, but wasn't here anymore.
Okay, so, yes, Aaron?
So I guess to stop too much more delay, should we go and make a motion approving the letter be drafted and be sent after review?
I don't, I don't think we need a motion on it. We just need to give directions to Terry to get it done. Yep, thank you. All right, so there's really not much more discussion on that, Ben. So that brings us to B, to approve bid from Pennington County for street work. Shannon makes a motion to approve as presented. Do I have a second?
A second.
Aaron's second, Sam?
The discussion.
Some discussion, we'll go here.
Um, yeah, so, um, Dan did the work to get us this quote. And it sounds like, I really don't think we'll get too much better of the line. I did talk with Dustin today to get a little more details on what actually entails. And the way he described it to me is that it's essentially a chip seal, but more targeted application. So they focus it on the areas that need, need improvement. Um, as far as timeline, all, all these names, Donna had the names on the list. They're actually the personnel who would be assigned to the project. But the only real difference between the nine thousand something and the current one, the only real thing they changed was the calculations for their labor costs and wages. So that's why they look pretty much the same. The machine that they use to do it is in a shop right now. But he said as soon as it comes out, they're hoping that it'll be set up to come down here, which could be a week or two. And I did ask him what he thinks on UPM, and he definitely thinks it would be better, we can get as much of the UPM done before they even get out here.
Yep.
So, um, I think, I think we need to, I guess, as soon as possible, see about acquiring whatever we need as far as, I don't know, would you think a pallet?
Two.
Two pallets? Drop them right in here?
I don't know what their delivery is. Normally I could pick it up.
Yeah.
Which I would bring my truck and pick it up and bring it down.
You'd be willing to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then like Aaron asked, I'll put a number together for the brooming, for my time with the UPM, for the shoulder work. Because we gotta do all of that ahead of it and have it ready for them. And then everything smoothly goes from there. Pretty much everything Aaron and us walked with Sam that day.
Yeah.
I see you worked on the streets a lot this weekend, thank you. Sorry.
We'll talk about that later.
Thank you, how's that? I see it was a family thing there. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the bid from Pennington County for the street work. Any further discussion on that? None. All those in favor? Aye. Shannon? Aye. Motion here, thank you. All right, that brings us to the review of the building permit, the extraterritorial area for Tim Halbert. Uh, Renee trap number four of the McThermit subdivision, and this is F Y I.
For Custer County, it says, because it's in the extraterritorial area, that they wanted to do it. An informational permit, and they were okay with that, and then then they will okay that. And he does have to do like a floodplain study with them and all that, so that's a requirement, but. And then I did have Neil review it, and there is a report from Neil in there. It was a staff report, right behind the permit, but it is, the engineer is okay with it, so.
Okay, he's getting this, this carport from the law. Yeah, they're selling them now.
Yeah.
The Legion is, yeah. Yeah, they're selling them now.
The staff report mentioned that the, um, he has the floodplain development permit to the county, which is a P. Some of the issues are denied by Custer County.
So you would like to have that put in our recommendation or that just that it's stated that he does still have to have a floodplain permit with Custer County?
Yeah, that'd be my favor to add it in the recommendations that floodplain permit is included to the county.
Okay. Very good, Shannon.
So that we're covering one of those.
Right. Okay, good. Aaron?
He'll get a copy of this too, right?
Yeah.
Dan?
This is a big thing of why at the top, when you were Joe Barnett, that annexation was part of that plotting and that he annexed in before any lots were gonna be built on, developed or anything else. And wasn't that a condition of it, I thought, that he would annex in? Or did not?
We discussed it and figured that at the time, that it would be annexed in.
Before any permits were allowed. And I know Shannon made a real big issue of that, that before any permits are issued, he needs to annex in so that we have that ability for our ordinances to apply instead of not. So I don't know that I would approve this until an annexation process takes place.
Okay, Aaron?
Um, yeah, that, and that's the one curious thing is hopefully Custer, it's in the extraterritorial agreement about annexing any, anything.
We have to do that part. They'll review everything if it's in like it is right now.
Right.
But with Barnett, that was the biggest thing that was discussed that night with everybody, was that it would be annexed before any permits were issued or allotted. And if you allow a number, you're gonna break that ability.
So we need to go back.
That's kind of, probably this is just information. We don't necessarily prove it.
Abuts the town property? Well, there is different regulations when it abuts the town's property, yes, there is. My concern was, in our subdivision ordinance, I believe it says that you cannot build any accessory buildings before you're full. And I don't, I wondered how that was gonna fit in when there's not planning on being a home, but he's actually adding it. I mean, it's in addition to his property. His lot will be the same width or approximately the same width and, but deeper now. So, but he has not planted it that way either.
Correct, that's number two, what it's gonna bring on.
In Custer County. Right. It's in Custer County, it's Custer County now. But we did agree that we would ask for annexation with these properties for building permits, with building permits. Cal?
The whole annexation issue was tied to the providing the utilities to the lots. And this one is kind of going around that since there's not any utilities.
Not gonna be any utilities on it?
I think that's kind of what the crux of what we were talking about during the Bongia discussion. I know Anthony brought that up a couple times.
Go ahead, Cal, or Aaron?
I have our extraterritorial annexation over, within this area is required that the town provides services during the term of this agreement, shall be concurred with individual subdivisions. So as long as the town, the county won't say anything about annexing if they're not getting utility funds.
All right. Okay, go ahead, Shannon?
In the motion where we approved this plat? And I know that Barnett agrees to annexation at the time of building permission holder or whatnot. Was there? Was that in the motion, motion to approve contingent upon annexation?
Terry is grabbing the big word right now. So it'll take your little.
To nail that down, but it would be a requirement.
Right.
Done that other than put it in motion.
And did you hear what Aaron just said? That he believes it's contingent on whether, Aaron and Cal said that it's contingent upon whether or not there will be utilities on the lot?
As to whether.
It has to be annexed, yes. That the annexation comes along with the utility work. Is what they believe it says. So I don't, I didn't know if you heard them or.
Well, that's the territorial agreement? Or?
Shannon, you hear me?
I just talked about the agreement we have to party, not necessarily a policy, I guess.
It says, it says in the paperwork, in the minutes, that it was, the plat was approved with no conditions. It's okay, I understand. Aaron?
I do remember us talking quite a bit about it, and I, I remember it was kind of stalling the conversation, so I think we kind of left it as, all right, well, we'll deal with the annexation when somebody develops. And this isn't really being developed in the same way that the annexation.
I just ended up my game.
Well, I think we should maybe send a letter along with the, whatever the board's approval or board's acknowledgement that, um, uh, in the future, should there be any utilities on this property, it would have to be annexed in that due to the fact that there are no utilities on it, that it does not have to be annexed in or planted with his other lot. How does that sound? Okay, Dan?
I believe the board could make it a condition that there's proper access, because there's not a proper access to the property.
Well, that would be a question, what is the access gonna be to it?
We have a lot of stream in here, but we don't have a gravel. Conditional stream for them where they're driving on grass, so.
So that would be another thing that we could add in the letter or the acknowledgement was that, um, the question of where your access is gonna be and that it's until the rest of the roads, until the rest of the properties are purchased and built on, there won't be a road to it, built by Custer or us, I'm sure. Let me see that. That, that is, his little watcher gave it. What was that, Shannon? He talked about his pickup, but it doesn't matter, whatever. Aaron?
Yeah, on this map he gave us, he does point out the private drive that's attached to the, uh, the Barmy of class. So maybe they have, they're gonna be, he can just understand that they're using that, that movement that's there.
They will make jar of, the bath, the baths and the other houses before, and the other day, number two was going in from our property over on this side. How far that is here, Charlie, do you go? All the way that to Creighton or all the way that down the lot? So if you're. Somewhere over there, okay. Yeah, the access appears to be at the, at the bottom on the right, where it says private drive.
Coming in from the west.
Coming in from the west, uh, behind the lots that are already there, the houses that are already there. So behind Michael Bowles and those other, um. Well, right now, he's just going through. Will have to go through one, two, and three. Just a minute, Dan was first.
I was just wondering, so he's pouring the concrete at a later date? So he's putting up his carport before? He puts the concrete in?
That's the way I took it, yeah. It'll be not have. It'll just be a floor.
And someone will inspect that? Somebody, who inspect that?
It's out of town, so we don't need anybody else. Aaron?
I'm just, I mean, I'm just trying to wonder what really would even be the best that necessarily in this being annexed, since it's not gonna be utilities? Probably taxes would probably be very considerable, right?
Where's John?
Yes, I mean, what would the town really get out of this particular undeveloped property being annexed?
It's just contingent to the town. And anything that is contingent to the town needs to be annexed really when it's built on and, um, I mean, that's just normal of anywhere, you know? And, and I, however. And, and however, I also see that we, we won't need it until there's utilities to it and as long as he doesn't, say he owns it, he doesn't have to put utilities on it, that's his choice. But at that time, should he decide to do so, then he would have to annex, in my opinion, he would have to annex into the town.
And say, like, if he were to take that and merge it, would the other piece of property in?
If he merges that, if he.
Then it would annex.
It would annex, if, if he planted it, if he changed his plat, so that that is one lot, when, when he, if he ever decides to sell that piece of property, as now, he could sell it as two different pieces. If he planted it together, then he couldn't. So there's, there's good and bad to both sides of that, but that's all his choice, not ours. We just have to follow our rules and the state's rules and county rules. And right now, there's, it's just an FYI, but we do need him to understand and know that that's as long as there's no utilities on it and that. And we do need to know more about the access to and fro. And if it is through the Barneye's properties, then we'll need to have, know that that's okay too. I mean.
He is, that, that letter you suggested, when he had a bunch of knowledge of different ideas.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And, and adding the under recommendation that a whole thing that I think is later through the.
Yes, okay.
See, there's a fancy castle.
Yeah, yeah, he's got it. Yeah, he's got it fully fenced and he has a small walk-through gate, but that's what he used to have. So that he could.
No, I'm talking about Barneye.
Say that again, Shannon, I'm sorry.
Well, the access road is behind us, the road's clear out to McDermott Street.
Right.
And I don't see, like, pulling a boat around through McDermott and coming up the access to get all the way to the carport. You know, depending that way, he has to develop a road if he's the last lot. He's just gonna go through his yard, and the backyard, and be on the ground to your backyard.
Well, if, if he changes that, yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll have to ask him about that.
He can, what he can do, because, you know, he still has a street driveway right there. So he can crouch it.
Well, if he changes his all the fencing, he can go right through there, yes. But, but that's his, that is just something we need to ask, because, because it's not his property, you know? I mean, really, we just need to know, so, okay?
Right.
Right. Okay. So is there anything further on this? Dan?
It may be a good thing to ask Anthony to see if we're starting annexation down there for that. I know the private road, I get that, but there is no road going to the carport, exactly.
No, there is.
And so there needs to be. And he's, you know, he's gonna, what he's gonna park in there and stuff, but in our compliances, I, I get where you are, but it would be nice to that lady that's there, before you get there that isn't annexed in, in Arnold's old place. It'd be great if Anthony can start that with Barneye, start that conversation.
Yeah.
And clean all this up.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be nice.
Something might be a deal for the board to maybe think about.
All right, any, did I, Cal, did I see your hand up there for a minute?
Yeah, I mean, the so-called road is an access easement that's called out in the.
Yeah.
In the plat, so it means, it's not.
A road.
Yeah, but it's not like Barneye planted it with the access easement in there, so, I mean, do we really even need to worry about if this guy is gonna talk to Barneye about using the access easement that Barneye already planted into the lots?
I just think it's, it's, for future, I think it's best that we know that. Because once that, that could change a little bit after, when the other lots going, the other houses going. Cause right now, it shows it right next to the fences. And it's not gonna be right next to it, the access will be in front of the homes.
Well, if it changes, well, we have to change the plat, then it'll be accessing the front.
Well, I did think he planned on using that for an access for his lot. Right. It's better over there. That was a utility, it's a utility, not a road.
Says access easement.
Yeah, utility access. And that, not, I think the road's gonna be in front, isn't it? Doesn't look like it here, but.
It looks south.
Yeah, further to the, yeah. Well, that's, that, to me, that's where their front windows would be looking at.
To the south.
To the south, yes. Otherwise, we're gonna.
And I didn't think he was planning on using that access road for the utility access road for anything.
That's what I thought too.
I can't read these numbers, but I'm sure he wants thirty feet along with the specialty use right there for, for roads.
Is it thirty feet? I can't, I don't know, might have. Well, we'll just ask, and then we'll, we'll know.
Ten feet each side of rear and five lots, thirty three utilities.
Utilities, yeah.
Ten feet each side, twenty-four.
All right. Any other questions from anybody? Steve?
Hi, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Good.
Did you come for a particular reason tonight?
Yeah, I just was wondering on where we're at with the proposed water line. It was supposed to run down Miami's.
It's coming.
Alongside of it?
Cause we sold him the lot.
Oh.
So it's. Soon as he gets a few minutes. It should be like, oh yes, within next thirty days.
Yeah, my water pressure sucks. Being where it's coming from.
Yeah, yeah, we sold him the lot.
Which one, right next to you?
No, there's two between you and, and then.
Okay, good, it's still.
I wanted to get that school, I'm sorry.
Well, I was talking to the, the guy that's moving it, who tried to move it yesterday. He told me last Thursday.
He, yeah, but he hasn't stayed.
He's running into some problems with the structure underneath.
Which, no, I, I.
And the lady that's hired him to move it is asking him to do all this structural stuff that's not in his contract.
Yeah, I said, you know, I said, that's, I didn't sell it to you and it's on my property and I want to move.
Yeah, that's what I told her, I said, I yanked it off mine, slow when I bought it.
Yeah. Well, it's been paid. So, you know, that's a bad thing paid.
So, so we're moving forward then?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
We have threatened it, like, it's not, it's gonna be gone.
Yeah, damn, I can bring another excavator home, you know?
Well, yeah, you wanna take that, we can take that one off of, of top.
That's, that's starting to look scary.
I wanna get rid of that one.
Getting ready to calm down.
Yeah, we wanna get rid of that, you know?
Dumpster?
Yeah, I, I, I'll hire, I'll get a dumpster, but I gotta answer your turn now.
Chuck's got two back codes.
Well, yeah, but Chuck has only one schedule.
One that he wants to take down, I don't know if he would, but I'll.
Yeah, I, we wanna know what he's willing to do, he's, you know? We wanna go there, okay, I'll tell him.
Yeah, I was just curious, how, what the progress was, I don't know, kind of where we're at.
Yeah, it's been.
I'll just sit here and quiet and listen.
Well, we're glad you came up, I haven't seen you in a long time, so, okay. So that brings us, basically, to the end of our meeting. Actually, oh, I hope I got Dan behind you first.
Well, I know if he's gonna ask the same question, I know.
So go first.
Can you make a motion on that?
What, on what?
To approve that, informational or not?
We don't have to. We just, again, it will be the instructions to send the letter and, or to call or vote on to get that information from him and give him the information that we need to provide him and. Was that it, Dan?
It wasn't.
The, in the packet where we originally expressed that, we have been like an engineer report or a complaint report that we made him do to attach all that, that we're not being here. So maybe in that property file in that list, or something, we have to do the annexation.
Property file?
So we didn't need to, you know, for, so that one's there, but I, I'm sure we made it in that list, but.
We'll do some more research on that.
Yeah, this is where we're ready when the building permits will come.
Yep, yep, okay.
For acquiring annexation regardless of what's that, you know?
Yeah, right. Okay, thank you, Shannon. Dan?
I was just wondering, I know you guys were talking about the streets and working out the streets, and you were gonna go pick up stuff, or have Dan pick up? Are you gonna make a motion to have him go pick up or, or buy it or purchase it or? What do we need to do, Dan, to make this happen?
I would say, yeah, that you should, if you guys are gonna approve two pallets from Beer's Block.
That's what I was talking about. It's just the word, what's, where do you want them?
Beer's Block Equipment.
Oh, yeah.
He's who carries them. But, yeah, so, then it'd be good to have a motion to do that, and I know the town, we either have to take a check, cause I have a charge account there, so I charged it there before, and then the town just reimbursed me. Would that be?
I know, but they don't have to pay tax.
Right, we don't have to pay tax, so, generally, what's been happening very regularly lately is that Chuck has just called, and then they talked to Terry, and Terry gets him the credit card number and approves it that way. Do you believe that would work for that situation?
Oh yeah, I need to call, have them call Terry.
Yes.
And we're there, and then they can just do all of, work with Terry, then I'll.
Okay.
Or Aaron can call Beer's Block and pre-align it and say, hey, we're gonna get two pallets of UPM and please, this is the credit card number, and have it all taken care of.
And have it all taken care of.
Then I'll just pick it up at my convenience.
Dan will pick it up.
Yeah, Shannon, are you catching all this? We're talking about the UPM for the streets?
Okay, good.
So it's, it's an expense, right? It's an expense under the Streets Committee, essentially?
Yeah, but we should still have an approval on it. I think we're okay with it having the, just having the street work. I think we can, and if we can't, then we'll put it on the next meeting for official approval.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we need a motion then, to allow and approve Dan to pick up the product that is needed to do the streets with Aaron calling the company, to give Dan the approval to pick it up and what is needed, the two pallets, and that, at the time, and we'll get Terry to give him the credit card number and pay for that.
Aaron, Shannon, one of them can get a hold of Dan, let him know that it's been taken care of.
Been taken care of, yeah.
He can go.
You might put it in, so it's, that it is part of the Pennington County.
Yeah.
Street work preparation.
Correct.
So that way it falls under your category of what you got on your agenda.
All right, yeah, I think I got a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for approval of purchasing of two pallets of UPM cold patch material to repair potholes and damage in roads in preparation for the Pennington County street work.
I second that.
All right, Dan?
Motion was made by Aaron, seconded by Donna. Any other further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, very good. Okay, that brings us to items from the public. Yes.
Yeah.
We forget cleanup Saturday.
Cleanup Saturday, woo-hoo.
Right here at the, Dan will have his loader out. So if you got a pile or you got something that you can't actually all let him know, you'll. He'll come over and pick it up with the loader.
What? Please explain to us again about the white goods. They're not allowed. So this, what's not allowed? White goods, so washers, dryers, stoves, refrigerators?
We put dryers and washers and stoves in.
Okay.
No refrigerator, no air conditioner.
Air conditioner.
Yeah.
Hot water heaters are fine?
Yes.
Old toilets are fine?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
No paint, no.
Say I have no paint? Paint or oils?
Motors.
Motors, yeah, okay, all right.
And then mores, we took mores, but they need to make sure all oil and gas is out of them.
Okay.
Otherwise, we didn't take them either.
Okay.
Batteries?
No.
No batteries?
So where can you take batteries and paint? Batteries go to.
Yeah, give you five bucks a battery, if you have a car battery maybe.
Well, I don't have any batteries, I got paint.
Can't help you.
I was told with paint, you open the can and let it dry out.
The quickest way is to put kitty litter in. And if it's good paint, you could probably take it.
Oh yeah, if, if the paint is so good, you just take it to the second house or?
They will take it.
Restore.
Restore, or.
You have to think about that, yeah. So. Yeah, I got two cans that you want to open, but that's, okay.
And then we'll have an area where it's good stuff that you think maybe somebody will set it aside and at the end of the day.
Linda holds it all?
No, she doesn't, we will throw it in the.
Linda will not be here, but.
Long will be though.
Yeah, Lon will not be holding it all home.
I'll watch him.
Or Aaron, or Cal, you know?
And they do have to have a water bill, yes, yeah. All right, anything else from anybody? Dan?
On Saturday, then, I did get eighty percent of the storm over cleanup, nothing in the body of the town. What's left on storm over cleanup is Main Street, all the corners, intersections, North Fifth, North Fourth, Tower Road, and the Town Office. All areas left and, I don't know, I'll, put a proposal to the town, cause what I did is, while I was cleaning them up, I cleaned all the shoulders up and cut them all down.
I see now.
At the same time, I called Chuck, got permission to put a bunch of the sod over on his lot over there as I was picking it up. So that helped tremendously, but there was still time involved in the cleanup order, but two, so.
Okay. All right. Eric?
I went over and peeked at Fairgrounds. Would you want to throw numbers at us for, for, and I don't think we would necessarily do it right away, because there's still got trucks coming in out of there?
Yeah.
But the numbers that we'll need, when it come, when all that's done, and we need to get that road back to beautiful?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm worried.
Well, I do think the construction guys should have some responsibility in that.
I already said, to be there responsible, because they came down there when that road was wrecked and they didn't care, you know? And I think it should be up to Rock to replace that.
It's not very a lot of crazy potholes, but it's turning to plod, all the old rocks. Surface plod, yeah.
So a person, oh, I'm sure.
Dan first.
A person should go through, and I figure it's gonna take four loads, twenty-two ton loads of gravel to cover that thing. If they had a blade and they would work with laying it down, packing it.
Yeah.
And the town provided the gravel, and worked a fifty-fifty deal with them, would probably go quite a ways and. I've been getting the gravel a hundred dollars a load cheaper from camp, but it's either or, wherever they wanna get the rock from isn't a problem, but that, it's gonna take that much gravel
Okay.
to cover that thing and
So you wanna continue with that, Aaron?
Yeah.
Discussing with Anthony and yeah, yeah, Dan, that'd be rough. And rock, stone and
Yeah, they got that D four out there, that would make very quick work in that.
But it might be too much for that, but they've got that big loader too where they can
Yeah, the rock truck, you know, they'll be putting pressure on it, yeah.
Just like I would do.
Okay. Steve, you have something else?
All right, I was just thinking a little bit more into the future about how what Ms. Ferguson just said about selling another lot. As far as the speed limit on that road, it's twenty-five. After you go past Ferguson, or Hallworth's house. It straightens out and it's twenty-five. So for him to start
We'll probably change that after.
Yeah, cause at twenty-five, they've got forty sometimes.
Yeah, we have, it's fifteen down there going down into our development.
Yeah, I, just in the future, I was thinking
Fifteen, and he says, I never traveled fifteen, I said, that's what speed limit is, it's fifteen, why are you traveling faster?
Some days when you see my little eight-year-old out there playing in the front yard, you know, it's kinda the guy's, I mean no disrespect intended, you know, but just in the future, if we do start having more homes on that street and more kids.
Will happen.
Yeah.
Good, Steve, thank you.
Yeah. But definitely all over her mom's stuff, because I get up in the morning, I'm gonna start videoing this pickup that flies, I'm sure it's a safety truck, flies by the house and then you guys is down there and then he goes flying past my house again. I'm gonna find out who it is, I'm gonna chase them with a sucker.
He's gonna go side by side and wait for you to say something. And I'll say, dude, I don't have my seatbelt on. Cause it won't go over fifteen without the seatbelt.
Any more comments? None? Trust me, Emma Foot. Donna?
I am worried everything I will say.
Shannon, do you have some input? Glad you were here with us, but electronically, thank you. And like I said, we're gonna work on the speaker system and see if we can get that fixed, so. All in time, it's just seemed to take a lot of time, so.
I will tell you all, it's been a great year here, so my family made a smart decision and we really enjoyed yours, so.
Good.
Steve, you guys are right where little, little pet.
Thank you, that's good to hear. Where did you get your car foot from?
Tri-State.
They put it up pretty fast, didn't they?
Yeah.
You don't have concrete?
No, it's just I put the asphalt millings down, I moved it out for them and I can get my doors at my dollars, four hundred dollars cheaper per yard. For what they wanted, you know, kind of say, man, dude.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did a good job.
No input from Cal? Aaron?
Uh, just to mention, when I was out with Linda, I saw a good opportunity to try a work order for Silver Smith with the water meter, so hopefully next meeting I'll I'll have an example work order of how the Silver Smith program's gonna come, so, very simple little thing, just to give us a demonstration of how.
Yeah, okay, good. Terry, do you have anything you need to, no? Okay, my input is just thank you, everybody, we did a little work session before the meeting. And got a, got a little bit done on that and so we're happy about that. The next meeting will be well, no, um, next Tuesday. Ah, I see, my calendars, I'm, I'm really trying to get in the mail here. Yeah, we have the meeting at the Community Center next Tuesday at six o'clock. So, and that will be with Neil and Anthony and, you know, so hopefully we'll get a good turnout for that. And then our regular meeting is the sixth of May coming up. Thank you, everybody, for coming, thank you for your time. We appreciate everybody being here. I think the motion is moving the adjournment.
That's me right now.
A motion to adjourn at six fifty-two from Donna? Do I have a second on that? All of the favor? Thank you.